We are calling the January 25th Pedaluma State Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items?
One member of the public.
Okay, if you would like to comment, please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. Anything action? All right, we are going to adjourn to closed session. All right, we are reconvening at 6:04. Next item, adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
Should I say that now? Yeah, I need, I would like to move to remove under the consent agenda 10.2.2 about the approval of the service agreement with math annex.
Good.
Because, well, it's only because it's under, it's also under discussion only. So I don't know how we can pass it before it's actually been discussed.
And I had tons of questions about it anyway.
Yeah, so I was wondering, so I'd like to move it either to an action item or to discussion only.
Why don't you move it to an action item? Make a motion to move it to action and then we can do the presentation at that time.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so move it to an action item with discussion.
Yeah, so it sounds like it's
It'd be under
Trusty Cloud is recommending the moving of 10.2.2, a consent item, to action, move it to as an action item.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So can I get a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
You're going there for a start on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would have messed it up anyway, Caitlin, I had to save you. All right, next up, Students of the Month for Kennelworth, Pedaluma Junior, Casa and Pedaluma High School. What do we have up first? Is it Kennelworth? Hello? Hi, you're on.
Hello, everybody. I'm Will Erlinghaus, Assistant Principal at Kennelworth. We're here to present our Students of the Month, and I have two leadership students who will take it away from here. Thank you.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Ronan Parsons. Ronan has been chosen as Student of the Month by his team of teachers because he's a true leader on the Kennelworth campus who demonstrates kindness and positivity to everyone around him. When asked to describe what makes Ronan such a wonderful student, almost every teacher used the words "hardworking," "exceptional," and "positive." When Ms. Chavez, Ronan's English teacher, shared Ronan is a student who always does his best work with a positive attitude. He's often one of the first students to respond to a question or share his thoughts and opinions about something. He is insightful, kind, and caring. He treats everyone with respect and is a pleasure to have in class. Ms. Manera, Ronan's math teacher, says he works hard in class with others and at completing homework accurately on his own. Ronan is a friendly and kind to all of his table partners and makes an effort to include everyone in his discussions of the day's work. In addition, if something is unclear to Ronan, he makes an effort to ask for help until he is confident he understands the material. In science, Ms. Crozier shared Ronan is a great motivated student. His work is exceptional. He's a leader in the class and a role model for his peers with his positive attitude. Ronan has impressively maintained a 4.0 GPA with a rigorous class schedule, including leadership and advanced English. Ronan's favorite class is science, where he enjoys completing all of his interesting labs and hand-on activities. Outside of school, Ronan engages in many hobbies and personal interests. Ronan is an avid basketball player and enjoys mountain biking, running, and fishing. Ronan finds joy in projects where he can fix or build things, and even built a large treehouse in his backyard with the help of his friends and his father. One of Ronan's personal achievements is having started a neighborhood odd job service, where he helps those in his community through services such as washing cars, mowing the lawn, and walking dogs. Ronan plans to attend Casa Grande High School, where he hopes to play for the basketball team. After high school and college, Ronan's dream is to play for the NBA or start his own business as a landscape architect. Ronan is a kind-hearted, very respectful young man and an impressive personal drive. Kennelworth is excited to watch this excellent student pursue and achieve all of his dreams. Congratulations, Ronan, for your accomplishments. Thank you very much. That was a great speech.
Okay, Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Jessica Dodson. Jessica's teachers have chosen her for the Student of the Month because of her wonderful enthusiasm and personal diligence. Jessica's teachers have been impressed with her kindness to others and positive energy. Ms. Farrell, Jessica's English teacher, says Jessica is a pleasure to have in class and is extremely well-liked by her peers. She brings endless energy and ideas to her English class. Jessica is a hardworking and extremely respectful student. She has been an outstanding role model. Her work shows thought and understanding, and she's a wonderful collaborator. She is willing to contribute her ideas and listen to what others have to say. Mr. Quinto from history shared Jessica is a kind, hardworking, thoughtful student who has a wonderful sense of humor. She's the Jim Halpert of Period III, clearly levels above the Dwight Truitt wannabes. Mr. Ryder, Jessica's math teacher, says Jessica is a very hard worker in class. She helps other students that sit with her, and she always has a positive attitude no matter how hard the work is. Jessica has shown endurance and dedication even when challenges have her efforts presented themselves and has earned a high 3.72 GPA. Jessica is proud of having persevered through distance learning, maintaining her personal academic standards with all As and Bs. As a proud member of the Kennelworth Leadership Class, Jessica enjoys her time planning and working at the school dances. Jessica is looking forward to applying for and hopefully continuing in leadership at Casa Grande High School next year. After finishing high school and college, Jessica is interested in pursuing a career in journalism or possibly as an ultrasound technician. When Jessica is not working diligently on all of her Kennelworth obligations, she enjoys spending time with her family, especially their long drives to the beach to watch the sunset together. Jessica describes herself as outgoing and extremely social and enjoys time with her friends as often as possible. Jessica also stays busy through her participation in the local soccer league. Jessica's positive energy is infectious, creating a welcoming and accepting environment to all of those around her. Kennelworth thrives with hardworking, respectful, and enthusiastic students just like Jessica. We couldn't be prouder to call you a cult. Congratulations, Jessica, for your accomplishments.
Congratulations, Jessica Rowan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Ronan and Jessica, and thank you to both of our readers. You did a great job.
Thanks again.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Pedaluma Junior High School.
Hi, I'm Dana Raca, and I'm going to be presenting for Pedaluma Junior. We're going to be starting with Daniel. We are honored to present Daniel Gopar Hernandez as one of our first Students of the Month for 2022. Daniel was born here in Pedaluma on September 6, 2008, and has been a part of our district since kindergarten. He is an excellent student, athlete, brother, son, and friend who is interested in the world around him and what life has to offer. Daniel enjoys school, works hard, and earns good grades. He thrived last year during distance learning, demonstrating flexibility, adaptability, and excellent focus, and continues to do excellent work now that he is back at school. Daniel feels strongly about his responsibility to do his best, to be kind to others, and to be respectful and helpful to the teachers. One of his favorite school assignments is individual and group presentations. His science teacher notes this about Daniel. He participates fully in class, works hard, and aces the science semester final. Daniel intends to continue his academic efforts and looks forward to having a successful and lucrative welding business. He would someday like to own a home and land where he could have livestock, horses, and a dog. Outdoor activities are a big part of Daniel's life. He enjoys riding dirt bikes and bicycles, fishing and playing kickball, basketball, baseball, and football with his friends, as well as playing video games. He and his brother spend a lot of time together doing a variety of activities, including welding. Daniel often helps his father around the yard. One of his favorite school field trips was to the Gold Rush Country. Daniel's mother has this to add. I'm so proud to have a son like Daniel. He is the most caring, lovable, and respectful person. He always does his best at school and at home. Daniel is a great son and a little brother. He is always taking care of all of us. He has the biggest heart. Daniel Gopar Hernandez is a model student and a good citizen. He cares very much about his friends, his family, and his community. We are proud to have Daniel represent Pedaluma Junior High as Student of the Month.
Thank you so much. I love the speech. It was perfect.
So our next Student of the Month is Grace Gutierrez. Pedaluma Junior High School is very excited to present Grace Gutierrez as one of our January 22 Students of the Month. Grace was born on February 22, 2008, right here in Pedaluma. She is an excellent student, athlete, an avid performer, and a very active member of our community. At school, Grace is one of those hardworking students who loves to be involved in school activities. Her transcript shows all As throughout junior high, and her goal is to finish the school year with straight As. Her band teacher says Grace is a fantastic student. She is always helpful, she volunteers, she works hard, she plays the flute to the best of her ability, and she is a pleasure to have in class. Her PE teacher adds Grace is an intelligent student who consistently performs well and is respectful to others. Grace is involved in several extracurricular activities. Her involvement with band goes beyond performance. She is the president of the band and choir club. She is a two-year veteran and valued member of the PJHS Girls Volleyball Team, and also plays on the Empire Volleyball Club Team. She looks forward to continuing volleyball at Pedaluma High School. As an elementary school student at Valley Vista, Grace received several red ribbons for her helpfulness, served on the student council, played in the school band, and played piano. Performance is one of Grace's biggest passions. She is a very involved member of the Cinnabar Young Rep Theater Group. She enjoys social activities, strives to be a good friend, and always looks forward to meeting new people. Several family members have added their positive comments about Grace. Her mother shares how proud she is. Grace is so many things: intelligent, empathetic, talented, inquisitive, caring, and beautiful. But what impresses me most is her kindness. Her dad adds, whether she is performing in a starring role in a play or helping out backstage, playing the piano when she thinks no one is listening, or putting on a show, she always gives 100%. We agree. Grace Gutierrez is one of our students who stands out as an excellent role model, and we are proud to honor her with the title of Student of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations, Daniel and Grace, and thank you for reading. All right, moving on to Casa Grande High School.
Eric Mendez is an extremely hardworking, driven student. He was born and raised in Madison, Wisconsin, before moving to Pedaluma when he was about 10 years old. In school, Eric excels in AP and honors courses with his favorite subjects consisting of history, psychology, and economics. Shout out to Mr. Hunt. Outside of school, Eric loves to work, priding himself on providing exceptional customer service at the local Target. He is heavily considering graphic design as a college major, but is currently undecided on his future career, with some other possible pathways including the social sciences and fine arts. It has always been Eric's dream to move back to his hometown and attend the University of Wisconsin-Madison. However, he is pondering the idea of staying in-state and attending a UC instead. There's a lot of uncertainty and decisions to be made in Eric's future, but what is known is that he will thrive in any school, location, or environment. Congratulations.
Thank you for that, Josie.
Nicole is a senior at Casa Grande High School, and she plans to attend the Santa Rosa Junior College after graduating. After two years at the SRGC, she hopes to study in the field of STEM at one of the many UCs. Nicole has already taken several classes at the junior college, as well as the majority of her classes at Casa, along with AP Physics at Pedaluma High School. Her favorite class throughout her entire four years of high school has been her race, class, and gender legal studies class. This course focuses on current issues in society and provokes many thoughtful discussions amongst the class. Outside of school, she enjoys playing soccer, painting, trips to the beach with friends, and playing with her two dogs, Lily and Gilmore. She loves her job at Peats, where she is training to be an official barista, and often spends her weekends at work interacting with the community through the mutual love of coffee. Her parents, Cheryl and Dana, have been her two biggest supporters throughout her entire high school experience, and she couldn't be more grateful. She is honored to be chosen for Student of the Month and wants to give a huge thank you to everyone. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you. All right, congratulations, Nicole and Eric, and thank you, Josie, for reading. Next up, we have Pedaluma High School. And we're also going to recognize our December Students of the Month, since they weren't able to attend last time.
Hello, everyone. I am Nicoletta Johnson, and I am going to be presenting both the December and January Students of the Month from Pedaluma High School. Starting off with the month of December, Megan Affon is the first Student of the Month. Megan is a senior at Pedaluma High and is very committed to her academics as well as her extracurriculars. She is currently captain of the girls' varsity soccer team, which she has played on for three years and has also played club soccer for over eight years. Megan is the president of Pedaluma's Hosa Chapter and a member of the Interact Club. Outside of school, she enjoys volunteering at Saks Hospice thrift store and hanging out with friends. Megan loves anything math and science-related and plans to pursue a career in medicine or computer science. She thanks her family and the PHS community for their support in her academic and extracurricular endeavors. The next Student of the Month from the month of December The next Student of the Month from the month of December is Mackenzie Soper. Mackenzie is a very dedicated student to the Pedaluma High School community. She is a four-year ASB member and has been freshman, sophomore, and junior class president, and she is currently the ASB president. She believes that ASB has become a big part of her personality. She also was the kicker for the Pedaluma High School football team her sophomore, junior, and senior year. She has also been on the girls' soccer team for four years. She is a link leader on our campus and has been helping out the freshmen get acclimated to their new environment. Besides extracurricular activities, she is an AP and honor student who has school first on her priority list. She plans to go to a four-year college to major in communications and then hopefully go to law school. Congratulations to both Mackenzie and Megan. And then, moving on to the month of January, Ben Wilson is one of our Students of the Month. Ben has been in leadership for all four years at Pedaluma High School. As senior class president, he focuses his time on making sure that all students feel welcomed and included on campus. By graduation, he will have taken 10 AP courses ranging from Spanish to physics, but his main passion is finance. During his junior year, Ben founded the Financial Gains Club with over 35 members. Together with Ms. O'Connor, they explore strategies for investing in the stock market and listening to guest speakers, such as small business owners to financial planners. Outside of school, Ben enjoys skiing and riding his dirt bike. He is very excited to be playing his second season of varsity golf this year and is eagerly awaiting his college responses. He is thankful to those who nominated him for this honor. Congratulations, Ben. The last Student of the Month from Pedaluma High School is Mauricio Mejia Pajola. Mauricio is currently a senior at Pedaluma High School. He likes to challenge himself academically, as seen through him taking multiple honors and AP classes throughout high school. At school, he is also treasurer for the bilingual student ambassadors. This club strives to make Spanish-speaking families feel more comfortable and welcomed at Pedaluma High School. This can be done through interpreting or being guides at school events such as open house. Outside of school, Mauricio works part-time at a retail store. In the past, he has volunteered at Mentor Me Pedaluma, an organization which he is thankful for due to the aid that they have given him. More recently, he has volunteered for the Redford Empire Food Bank by distributing food at the Miwak Elementary School site. Mauricio is a member of Ballet Folklorico Iri, where he enjoys learning different regional dances from Mexico and performing them. This has led him to participating in several quinceañera courts and quinceañera expos. Mauricio enjoys spending time with his family, especially his older sister, who he looks up to. He also maintains a close relationship with his family in Mexico and looks forward to visiting them. Mauricio is planning on attending a four-year university and studying in civil engineering. Congratulations, Mauricio.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Mauricio, Ben, Mackenzie, and Megan. And thank you, Nicolette? Was it Nicoletta?
Yes, Nicoletta.
Nicoletta, thank you. All right, next up, item 6.2, United Anglers of Casa.
I thought we should maybe thank Molly and Melinda for the background.
Yeah, thank you too for your beautiful
Didn't know I was going to get that special pleasure.
Hi, my name is Kate Carlson. I'm the current president of the United Anglers. I'm going to give a brief presentation. Let me share my screen real quick. Can everyone see that? Okay, sounds good. Like I said, I'm the current president of the United Anglers of Casa Grande, and today I'm just going to go over what we've done this year, because we've done a lot of cool stuff. So when I first joined this program, two and a half years ago, as a sophomore, it was mainly focused on providing hands-on learning experiences and educating the public. So we learned how to interact with and protect the environment and annually reared about 20,000 steelhead trout from eggs to fingerling. Distance learning obviously made this difficult as we tried to learn the intricacies of hands-on conservation through Zoom. And then, in the last year, our program was sought out to help the struggling coho salmon population. So the students went from Zoom to taking care of an endangered species on the first day of school. Coho salmon being endangered means that they are threatened by extinction, and hatcheries need to return 5,000 to 10,000 fish each year to change that classification to threatened. Before agencies stepped in, only about 20 coho salmon remained in the Russian River. Last year, after hatchery stepped in, the Russian River had less than 200 return. To build the population, the Don Klaus Hatchery, run by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on Lake Sonoma, maintains brood stock coho salmon. This means that their fish actually stay in the hatchery throughout their lives to strategically produce in a way that maintains genetic diversity and builds a healthier population. This is different than a production hatchery, which you might think of when you think of a hatchery. And a production hatchery basically replaces fish in the wild with mass numbers to increase and maintain their struggling population. So last summer, Lake Sonoma's water temperature was warming, and the environment for the brood stock coho salmon became increasingly unstable. The government had to act. So actually, so 50% of their brood stock coho salmon were transported to Casa Grande over the summer, and new students were greeted with between 4,000 and 5,000 captive brood stock at the start of the school year, first day. They maintain their survival and monitored their health with technicians from the hatchery, as you can see in the pictures. This was a success, and we returned the fish in October when the water temperatures cooled down. It showed both state and federal officials that we were up to the challenge. So when the central coho salmon population was threatened, we received another call to action. Because of recent fires, the Kingfisher Flat Hatchery in Santa Cruz lost their rearing tanks. These are used to incubate eggs and basically bring them to fry. This is the last remaining source to keep coho genetics alive in central California. So if they cannot successfully incubate and rear central coho salmon each year, coho will only be found north of the Bay Area. This will not only decimate the population below, but it will threaten the Russian River stream. So we were asked to maintain this year's class. We normally rear about 20,000 steelhead trout eggs each year, but this year, we will be rearing 80,000 Scott Creek coho salmon in order to keep this year's coho class alive. This is the most eggs and the most sensitive fish we've ever reared, but we are capable and up for the challenge. They will stay with us until early May, and then they will be returned. I have two Montana boxes. Montana boxes are what you see students picking eggs out of right now on the screen. And if this class has taught me anything, it's shown me my own capability in making environmental change. Do you have any questions? I can stop screen sharing.
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you. I have a lot of friends that didn't know where Pedaluma was until they read about y'all's program in the news. So thanks for bringing positive attention to Pedaluma and Casa Grande. Go Gauchos.
I know that Dan Hubacher was on the call, just for moral support. This is really huge. This is, I think that Kate's been very humble about this. Some of their work that is taking place, not only did they get wonderful press on that, but it's really a large number of people have, we're not even aware of what the situation was with the coho salmon. And I think what's going to ultimately happen from this is we're going to see some additional support from private benefactors down the road. But they are becoming, very quickly, almost a linchpin point of contact to do some of this work. The fact that we have the facility available to be able to pull this off is really nothing short of amazing. And so kudos again to everybody in the program.
That actually does bring up a question. Do you do public tours right now because of COVID, or are you suspending it? Or do you have them so that people can come and visit this incredible place?
We do give tours right now. When? If you want to call beforehand and schedule something for sixth period, usually we have students around who are able to give a tour.
Is that what period you're in, Kate?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So we can call the school and set up a tour?
Or the hatchery number. I know there's a link on the school website to the hatchery, and we have our number there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Kate or Gary, for the assistance that Casa provides to U.S. Fish and Wildlife or California Fishing Game, is there any, can we get funding from them to support this program?
You know, that's a really good question. I think that, you know, as I was listening to the presentation, the short answer is probably not in the short run. However, I do think that there's an opportunity here to reach out to our local legislators to get some trailer bill language put in place. It's a small amount of money that would be a significant amount of money for them. I think that we could be reaching out to them, and we'll do something. I'll make sure that we do get some movement on that, because I think this is really a win-win. You know, everybody in the legislature want to see the species thrive. It's not a lot of money that they could throw at this that would be, you know, at least for their budget. So we'll reach out to the representatives of our local constituents and see if they can get some movement. I think this is more of a, it's going to be more of a state thing than it's going to be a federal.
I have a question, Kate. What made you want to take this class and continue in it? And do you plan on continuing in this? And do you plan on continuing in this field in college?
Yeah, so I've always been really interested in the environment. I've been camping since I was super young, and I've just been always interested in protecting it. And so just the name of the class, of the first class, Environmental Conservation and Restoration, prompted me to take it as a sophomore. I was the only sophomore in my class. Usually people take it as a junior and senior. And then from that, like I said before, it just, it's taught me my own capability in like, high schoolers can make change, and I think it's taught a lot of high schoolers that. And so now I'm applying to colleges, and I'm hoping to major in political science with a minor in environmental studies, so I can actually work on legislature and help the boots-on-the-ground, hands-on work that I know is happening, and I know a lot of people are working hard on.
Amazing.
Wow.
Kudos. Any other questions? All right, amazing. Great job. Thanks to see you. All right. Next up, item 6.3, Petaluma Transition Program Presentation.
Hi, everybody. I'm Molly Nagel. I'm the Special Services Director for the school district. And good evening to the members of the board and the Petaluma community. It's my pleasure to introduce Special Services Program Manager, Mandy Kirk. He'll be sharing information about the district's community-based transition program.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm gonna share my screen, share my presentation with you. Here we go. So I'm gonna share a short presentation about our new program, but first I'm gonna rewind. So the Petaluma Transition Program was established in 2019. It was run previously by the County Office of Education, and it was returned to Petaluma so that we could serve students in the community where they live to help young adults develop their unique potential for independent living. And here we are. The Petaluma Transition Program serves students 18 to 22, the rate of qualifying conditions, who continue to receive services through their IEPs. We started this year with 21 students, and today we have 18. Two students completed the program in December, one moved out of state, and we expect 14 new students to apply for the coming year. Our classes are currently held Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. until 1:30 in the afternoon at Petaluma Junior High. We've been having our classes at the Petaluma Community Center, but they're closed currently because of COVID. We follow the traditional school year calendar, and we offer four weeks of extended school year during the summer. Students are placed in one of two classrooms based on their skills and their experience levels, as students progress through the levels they move through the program to earn a certificate of completion. And our why and how, when we organize our program, we look to the National Alliance for Secondary Education and Transition Standards, which are research-based benchmarks that articulate quality transition services for all youth. And the standards have five domains. The first is schooling. We provide accessible differentiated instruction by credential teachers. Career preparatory experience. Our students explore careers they might be interested in, and they participate in volunteer or paid work experiences. Youth development and youth leadership is provided through exploration of their own selves. What are their preferences? What do they know about themselves, their strengths, their areas for growth? And how can they learn to advocate for themselves as developing adults? Family involvement. We encourage open communication. We recently sent an email survey to parents asking, parents and families, asking, how are we doing? What can we do better? And what would you like to see us do in the year ahead? And that feedback goes both ways. Our fifth domain is connecting activities. So our students are with us until they're 22, but they are often able to connect to organizations that will serve them beyond that date. North Bay Regional Center is one organization. Department of Rehab is another organization. So we create inter-agency teams. We invite them to come to IEPs and make sure that students have a strong connection to those organizations before they leave our program. And how do we do that? We offer work experience. Currently, we have students working at the Central Kitchen at the junior high. We have now made progress in an application with CVS's Workforce Development Program, and we are in the initial stages of talking with Petaluma Adult School to help them meet some of their childcare needs, Petaluma Hospital to work in their laundry facility, and Smart and Final Grocery Store. We also provide classroom instruction. Here we see some of our students struggling with a fitted sheet, trying to fit that on an air mattress. So we provide functional math, reading and writing, skills and practice, activities of daily living, chores, laundry, banking, budgeting, health and self-care, so fitness. We do yoga together every morning. We talk about nutrition. We have cooking lessons, first aid, dental hygiene, and today we started relationships and dating, and that was super gross for some of those kids. They were not happy about that, but we're doing it anyway. And then we also have weekly outings. We go to the library. We go to the grocery store. During the holiday season, we did some holiday shopping together. And on those outings, we practice transportation skills, so trip planning. Which bus do I need to get on? How long is it gonna take me to get there? Working backwards from the time I need to arrive. We work on pedestrian safety, social skills, shopping skills, and leisure activities. We want our students to know how to have a pro-social, appropriate fun time, as well as doing the chores and necessary things that we help them learn how to do. And what have we been up to this year? We've been making crafts that we're gonna sell at the farmer's market at the community center to raise funds for our program. We've been doing cooking lessons. We've had two holiday feasts where the students did all the cooking. And we've had visits from the Department of Rehab and from Petaluma Transit. And I'd like to close with our aim, which is our vision. Every student grows into their most independent self with a vision for their future and a plan to make that happen. And I'd like to say a huge thank you to Molly Nagel, Belinda Susan, Chris Thomas, and Matthew Harris for their past and ongoing support. With additional thanks to our teachers, our service providers, our instructional aides, to Marcia Short and the transportation team, and to Lynn Wong and the PCS Central Kitchen for their support for our work program.
Well, we'd like to thank you for all the work you've put in and, you know, growing the program, and you're just doing a fantastic job. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I agree. If anyone has any questions? I do have one, Mandy. So how do students get referred to the program?
So students are referred by their case manager. The majority of our students come from Petaluma High either through the, excuse me, SDC program or the Full Inclusion Program. Some students come from South County. We have two students currently from Catati Runet Park and one from Sebastopol.
Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you. Thank you, Molly and Melinda and Chris.
Thank you.
This has been a long road to get here.
Yeah.
And this kind of completes full circle the goal that we had. This was four years ago, which was, remember when the consortium begun, South County Consortium, the number-one goal that the district had at that particular time, the district superintendents in Petaluma, was that our kids need to stay in Petaluma and not be farmed out. And we identified this one three years ago, maybe four years ago, that this was one program that our kids were still, they were receiving a fine program, but they were being farmed out, and we thought we could do it better. So Melinda and Molly grabbed this one and ran with it and found the right person in Mandy to step up. And so as early as the program is in its infancy, it'll get much more sophisticated, and the relationships with community partners will get, become deeper. But the important thing is that these students are gonna be making connections in their community, work connections in their community, be able to make a difference here. So this is a really, really big one for the district, a real big, a really big positive step. So congratulations, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Lend a Hand Education Project Presentation by the Petaluma Valley and Petaluma Sunrise Rotary Clubs.
I seem to be missing a video. I don't know if you can see me.
There you are.
There I am. And Karen, are you going to do my screen, or shall I try here from share screen? I can try here. Here we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Oh, good. My name is Libby Fitzgerald, and I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Petaluma Valley. And I'm here on behalf of our annual program called Lend a Hand to Education. And we have been doing this for, whoops, hold on. We've been doing this for 18 years. And here we go. Lend a Hand to Education is a special project for our schools, and it's organized by two of the Rotary Clubs in Petaluma, Petaluma Sunrise and Petaluma Valley. And since 2004, we have awarded nearly $290,000 to Petaluma area K through 12 teachers. Next. So for the 2021-22 school year, we had 79 teachers apply for grants, and all of those were funded this year in 20 schools for a total of $18,024. And of that, the Petaluma School District received 31 grants in 10 different schools, totaling nearly $6,700. And at this point, I'd like to give a little shout-out recognition to Casa Grande High School, who had eight teacher grant awards, which was the largest number in any school in the Petaluma School District. Congrats. And of those, total 79 grants this year, 20 of them went to STEM programs in the schools, and 23 went to literacy projects, reading, writing, and language arts. Next, and Arts and Music received 11 grants, and Special Education, eight grants. So I want to thank all of our sponsors. The financial support for the grants come from our Rotary fundraisers here in our community, as well as donations from other community members and businesses. There are no administrative fees deducted. 100% of the money raised goes directly to teachers for the classrooms. And I'd like to give one special ending thanks to all of our teachers. On behalf of the Rotary Clubs of Petaluma Sunrise and Petaluma Valley, we are honored to present to Supervisor Harris and the Petaluma School District Board this virtual check, $1,699, for 31 teacher grants. Actually, the check was already delivered to the school district. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Great presentations, yeah. Thank you, Libby, so much for working so hard for education, and you've been doing this for so long, so committed. I'm just really thrilled and proud that you've been doing this and that we get to benefit and our teachers and our students, most importantly.
Well, that's one of Rotary's passions here. It's not just me. It's a whole group of people in those Rotary Clubs. It's quite an operation, and I'm glad to be a part of it on behalf of the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are gonna move on to the budget proposal.
I have to say, this is a really hard act to follow. You just look at all of those presentations.
They were fabulous.
Absolutely. And I would also like to say, my son went through the transition program through SCO, and I can't say enough about the impact that that program has on those students' lives long-term. So just shout-out to the transition program. Super excited about it being here in Petaluma.
Thank you.
So, as you know, we start our budget process really in January. So the governor comes out with his budget proposal for the upcoming budget year, which in this case is 2022-23. It's hard to believe it's already well into the 20s. And so this really is a jumping-off point for our budget development process. So what we're gonna do is kind of go through and talk about some of the highlights in the budget proposal, in particular for K-12 education, and specifically for Petaluma City Schools, and kind of some quick estimates of what we think that proposal will mean for us financially. I'd also like to remind everybody that this is the beginning of the state budget process, too. There's a long way to go between now and June, when the state legislative committees finish their work and present a final budget to the governor to sign on June 15th, which is what they're legally obligated to do. But it gives us a roadmap for how we start our process and where we begin, knowing there's gonna be a lot of twists and turns along the way. And so I just want people to keep that in mind, that this is a really good, solid state budget for K-12, K-14 education. Prop 98 is getting some good infusion of money. And it's against a backdrop of a pandemic, and it's against a backdrop of declining enrollment. For the majority of districts in the state of California, Petaluma's no exception to that. So we're gonna talk a little bit about enrollment projections, our average daily attendance, or ADA, which you'll hear me talk about, and how the budget proposal kind of is interwoven in all of the other assumptions that we have to, that we have to look at when we're preparing for next year's budget and making plans, really. Okay? So we're starting out with kind of the positives and key takeaways of the budget proposal. One of the positives, a big positive, is that we're getting a very significant COLA, and remember, it's just an estimated cost of living adjustment, 5.33%. And not only is he proposing it to be on the local control funding formula, but also on the state categoricals, the largest of which, of course, is Special Education. We looked at enrollment projections for next year and the out-years. We collected the data from our feeder districts in Petaluma and then projected out those combined enrollment numbers to see how does that impact our secondary district in particular with all of those other students from those other districts. And the majority of districts in Petaluma are trending down a bit. And so what we saw is that we have relatively flat enrollment moving forward, assuming, those are big assumptions, that based on cohort projections, and cohort simply means all the kindergartners become first graders, and all the first graders become second graders, and so on and so forth. We drop maybe about 15 students when we look at that. And we also have to project out, where do we see our transitional kinder program going? Because we know we're implementing the first of three years of full implementation of transitional kinder, starting with next year. And then we also have to project out, where do we think our kinder is happening? So when we look at, assuming a couple of additional classes of transitional kinder, we're opening classes at both Cherry Valley, or we're planning on, and Grant, assuming flat kinder enrollment, our overall enrollment stays relatively flat. We lose about 15 kids, given those projections. One of the other pieces in this governor's budget proposal is how do they address this? is how do they address this issue of the cliff that's coming in 2022-23? And I'm sure you've heard this whole idea of the cliff that districts are facing. And that cliff really is a three-pronged piece. It's really this declining enrollment, not only because of students moving out of state, declining enrollment overall in general in the state, but also the impact of COVID-19 on attendance. Our attendance rate, historically district-wide, is about 96.5%. So students show up 96.5% of the time. So if we have 100 students, we get 96.5 ADA. As simple as that. When we looked at our attendance as a P1, which is around December 3rd, it varies with our year-round schools, our attendance rate was hovering around 92%. That has a significant impact on our ADA. That, I'm sorry, around 94%. It's about a 2.5% drop, which is representative of about 178 ADA. So it's a significant amount of loss in ADA. So not only are we facing this enrollment drop, we're also facing this attendance drop. And again, we are not unique. The state of California, the nation, is facing these enrollment challenges and attendance challenges. So the governor, well, and I should say, and remember, we have had the benefit of using 2019-20 ADA for both last year and this year. And that has helped hold districts harmless from the impacts of COVID as they relate to enrollment and attendance. The governor, for next year, what he's doing is he's proposing this idea of a three-year rolling average. So generally, districts are allowed to use the higher of or the greater of current year ADA or prior year ADA. That hasn't gone away. But what he's overlaying on top of that is, or the greater of a three-year rolling average. In this case, it would be 2019-20, 2019-20 again, because that's the ADA we used last year, and then this year's ADA. So for us, what does that mean? And so when we looked at it, using the current projections, we're not, we don't have our final ADA for this year yet. That comes in March. Instead of dropping roughly 400 ADA, that rolling average, we would drop between 134 and 140 ADA. So you can see, 400 versus 134 is significantly better. It's not the same as the hold harmless, in which we would not drop at all. So anyway. What does that mean? When you look at the combined COLA of 5.33%, and you look at this three-year rolling average, based on what we know right now, it means we would have an increase of about 2.1 million in revenues, LCFF revenues, next year over what we're budgeting for this year. And that sounds like a lot of money. And it is a lot of money. A 5.33% COLA is a really good COLA. The challenge becomes losing that many ADA. So then when we look at some of the negatives, we've got expenditure increases that we're also projecting. And the thing I would point out is, at First Center, we presented our First Center report with multi-year projections. And these cost increases that we're going to go through, were mostly built into that First Center report. So this is all known stuff for us. We know that we're going to get a PERS increase. We're estimating that right now to be about $465,000. Later, I'll show you what those PERS rates are going to be. A STIRS increase of about $883,000. Again, those numbers were built into our First Center report. Inflation is actually higher, however. So inflation, the 12-month average, the increase in inflation is 7% when they look at the past 12 months. That is a huge amount of inflation. For those of us who remember the early 80s and late 70s, I'm looking at Gary, because I know, you remember. Inflation was huge. It was very, very high. I mean, we're talking 18%, 12%. If you were refinancing your house, you were looking at 12.5% interest rates, 18% interest rates. It's almost unthinkable now. So inflation is a huge issue for us, and they're projecting 3.69% inflation for next year. We usually assume 2%. Step-in column costs, these are known costs. This is a combined certificated classified. It's around $550,000. The total amount of this equals about $2.1 million, just under $2.2 million. So all of a sudden, you can see side by side, yes, $2.1 million in increased revenue covers some of these additional costs. It doesn't cover unknown factors, like what's going to happen with property and liability, what kind of salary and compensation increases are we facing? That's where some of our challenges lie. I'd also like to point out that fine print in the red, when we did First Center on the multi-year projections, we were projecting close to a $1.9 million deficit. Our expenditures exceeded our revenues by about 1.89. The $2.1 million increase here helps with that. It's going to cover about $2.4 million of that. Now, why do you say 2.4 versus 2.1? It's because we were actually projecting in the first year, in the multi-year projections at First Center, a drop in LCFF revenue of about $300,000. So the 2.1 of 300 is the 2.4 million. So this is just kind of, there's lots of positives in the state budget. One of the things I would have liked to have seen, I was hoping many people were, and again, there's a long way to go between now and then they revise in the final budget, is some relief on those STIRS rates. That STIRS rate increase is an ongoing increase, and that is a huge amount of money for us. The PERS and STIRS and the declining enrollment, that's the three-pronged stool of that cliff that districts are facing. It's those three things in particular. They're quite onerous.
Chris, do we know how long PERS and STIRS are going to continue to go up?
The rate that they're projecting for next year is the top rate for STIRS.
Okay.
So that is, that brings us to 19.1%, which is that target rate. PERS, it's not as clear. So STIRS, as you'll recall, seven, eight years ago, maybe even nine, 10 years ago now, the state actually took action to establish an increase from 8.25, which is the historic rate, to 19.1 over what was going to be seven to eight years. And there have been years in which the state has provided us with some relief on that. They've put money toward buying down that STIRS rate. That's a huge increase. That's more than doubling, 8.25 to 19.1. It's important to also state, people, members of STIRS aren't the ones who created this problem. So I just want to be super clear about that. And teachers, certificated staff, also got hit. Their rate, they had 8% out of pocket.
Right. How much is it now?
It's now, I think, 10, 10.15, I believe. So they also have an out-of-pocket increase. So they're kind of getting hit as well. PERS, it's not as obvious. We don't know what that end date is. Because PERS, those rates are established by the PERS Board annually. And so they have targets. We don't know what that final target will be, dependent on investments and other types of things. So I don't know what the end game is for PERS.
Thank you.
This just shows you that 12-month percent change in the inflation rate. And you can see that 12 months, 7%. Again, they're estimating the inflation for next year to be 3.69 or just under 4%. But this is real, these are real impacts that our staff are feeling every single day. We're all feeling it, whether it's in gas prices, whether it's in rental prices, food prices. Everything's going up, and it's driven by this inflation, which in large part is being driven by the pandemic. This is just showing you a visual of Prop 98. I won't go into all the nuances of Prop 98, except to say, you can see at the end, Prop 98 is being funded at the highest level, which you would expect. You can see in the middle there, the Great Recession, when Prop 98 dropped by billions, and we all felt that. The only other thing I would add is that this year is the first year in many years that we're actually looking at test one. And test one under Prop 98 is simply, they're going to fund roughly 38%. Prop 98 is funded by roughly 38% of the overall state revenues.
Does the state still owe Prop 98 money to schools?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Because I know there were years where we did not get the full.
I don't know that we're in that boat at this point. That's a good question. I don't know for sure.
All right.
So this is the financial dartboard that we use as we do our multi-year projections. And you can see, 21-22, the COLA was 5.07. Next year, 5.33, 3.81, if my eyes are seeing that correctly, and 3.64. So you can see those are pretty strong COLAs. Part of that is being driven by this whole idea and notion of inflation and that they're projecting inflation, not at the 7% rate necessarily, but to continue. And you can see the CalPERS and STIRS rates. So you can see 22-23 for CalSTIRS, 19.1, and then it stays at 19.1. You can see CalPERS goes up to 26.1, and they're projecting at this point to stay around just under 28 for the next three years. That's a lot of money. And so you can imagine, if you're in CalPERS, for every $100 we pay somebody, we pay next year $26.10 toward CalPERS. And that's in addition to all the other payroll taxes.
PERS is going to be much more volatile, because it does not have to go to the state legislature for vote. It just goes to the PERS Board. So if they don't like where their investments are tracking, then they can essentially unilaterally do the increase. So keep an eye on that one.
So this is just a different part. This shows you the impact. We don't get a percentage increase on our LCFF. What they do is they apply an average in the form of a dollar amount. So you can see the base grants by grade span, K3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, and then the COLA, 5.33% COLA applied to that. And so it goes up by a specific dollar amount. And then the grade span adjustment, and then the supplemental. I also like to point out, the very last line is the concentration grants, of which we don't benefit any. It used to be 50%. It's gone up to 65%. So some of our neighboring districts, who have a much higher unduplicated pupil count, for every pupil over that 55%, they're getting 65% of the base. So 165%. This is just the ADA cliff, if you will, that they've talked about. And this is just kind of as representative. I thought this was a good slide showing that 1920, the funded ADA, 1920, P2 ADA. 2021, in this example, you can see how the ADA dropped, and yet we're getting funded on the higher of 1920 ADA. 21-22, again, it dropped even further, but we're still being funded at that level. And then all of a sudden, the funded ADA, even for the rolling average, yes, we won't be funded at the pink level, but we'll be funded at the red level, which is still far less than what we got over the past three years. And this is just showing that same thing, only if we look at an average district, this is a hypothetical scenario, and they have 10,000 ADA in 1920. Then they got funded based on 1920 ADA and 2021, 10,000. And then in 21-22, they dropped to 9,500. Then in 22-23, they're projecting 9250, so 250 less ADA next year. The rolling average would give them 9833, which is 333 higher than what they would be funded on. Because remember, they get funded right now in law, the higher of the prior year or the current year. So the higher of 21-22, 22-23 is 9,500. So even though they dropped to 9250, they still can use that 9,500. The rolling three-year average gives them an additional 333 ADA. But they're not getting the 10,000. So it's a drop. It's not as dramatic of a drop. As someone in the Budget Advisory said, instead of a cliff, it's maybe a high curb. You know, it's still a drop.
I'm not sure about that.
Oh, one last point. This does not apply to charter schools. So charter schools did not get that same protection this year. So charter schools got, and we have three charter schools, so it's very relevant for us. Our charter schools got protection last year. We were able to use 2019-20 ADA for last year. But this year, they're funded on current year, and they never get prior year. It's always current year ADA. Luckily, our charters are growing, so that hasn't been a problem for us. So this is just free and reduced breakfast. You probably have heard that we're on summer seamless. Summer seamless is simply, we feed all children for free. They don't have to qualify. This is the whole idea of this universal meals program that the governor is proposing. And it's kind of a good news, bad news situation. The good news is, we can feed more kids. And the good news is, those kids get to eat, and they don't have to prove that they qualify. The challenge for us is that our facilities weren't designed around it. So we have facilities that have limitations. And so what has been our historic level of service has dramatically increased overnight. Because literally, we went over the summer, finding out we're going to have this universal meals program idea. So we are taking steps to ensure, we're like, we're adding ovens, where we have ability to do that under hoods, and so on and so forth. The state is coming in and proposing this universal meals continue, and then increasing the funding level for the food service program. So we're going to be taking a very close look at that.
Chris, does the funding level equal the cost?
That's a great question. We don't know the answer to that. We're still analyzing our staffing and trying to actually edge our staffing up in order to accommodate the additional students that we're feeding. And so it's just kind of like, all year, okay, another half an hour, add 15 minutes, another half an hour. Because it's just, we didn't know in the beginning, the beginning being August and September, was it going to continue? Was this a blip? Was it going to continue? And it has continued. The interest in our meal service has continued. And so we are analyzing all that. The other thing is, keep in mind, inflation, huge hit on food service. Because the cost of food has just dramatically increased. And so we're also analyzing those impacts, too. So it's kind of a wait and see on this, to see how much this will benefit or help us, or hopefully will at least be even. So it's kind of wait and see. Special education, you know, a lot of times, the cost of living adjustment, the state does not apply toward categoricals. Fortunately, in this proposal, and again, this is a good state proposal for K-12 education, they're recommending to apply the 5.33 to Special Education. You'll see in the slide that we did quantify, we tried to quantify where we think that will be. We don't get Special Education funding directly. It goes through the CEPLA, and it gets filtered through the Fiscal Allocation Plan. So we don't know how much of that 5.33% benefit we'll get. But we're hopeful. This shows you the CalPERS rates again. We don't need to go over that again.
Did the employee contribution go up as well for PERS?
No.
No.
And remember, PERS is a much broader plan. PERS covers many of our first responders, police, fire, state workers. So PERS is a much bigger plan. And there's nuances to PERS that where PERS is impacted by some of that, like early disability, early retirements, because of some of what those folks face on the job. So, but no, there's no employee increase in that contribution. Good question. This is just the STIRS rates. It kind of shows you back the 8.25 and how it's incrementally gone up. And one year, it actually went down. That's where the governor bought it out. It went from July 19 to July 20. It actually went from 17. something to 16.15. So it actually went down about 0.95%.
So there is a little bit of rumblings on this one, at the state level, that there's going to be a push for some additional monies one time to go into STIRS and PERS, particularly STIRS, though, because they're already crunching their numbers. If you are following at all what's happening in the stock market, they're not going to meet their projections. You know, they're heavily based on hitting those investment goals. So you'll see what happened, but it probably won't, it won't give any relief probably to the districts. It would just mean possibly, at least for one year, that number may go up, and they might provide some extra dollars to it. But it's, this is the best, this is best-case scenario, what she's presenting on this one.
Well, and I would say, that 8.25 to 19.1, this represents millions annually. Like, that's cumulative. And the state never gave us any additional money to offset these additional costs. That's really what's troubling to those of us in finance, is that it's one thing to buy down the rate one year and say, okay, we're going to have the rate go down. But that doesn't give us that relief for that cliff that gets augmented. They should have rebentched the base amount of our LCFF grants to actually help us offset these costs. So I guess that's all I'll say about that.
Especially since it wasn't our fault.
Nope, they have never given us...
Where did I hear this $20,000 of students that was... Yeah.
Well, the sad part about it is that we're moving towards that number. Because as students, there's fewer students in the system, and more dollars in. It's kind of a math trick.
No, remember, they collapsed all of our former categorical funds. And remember, because I don't forget, only 80%. Because in the Great Recession, they cut all the categoricals by 20%. They never restored that. That was a 20% permanent reduction. And they rolled that 80% of those categoricals, including like deferred maintenance, which they never restored, into the base amount of the LCFF funds. So, yeah, I mean, they never gave us an additional re-benching. Because I don't know if you recall, for those of you who've been around a little longer, when we moved to, we used to get funded, our ADA included excused absences. So if you had an excused absence, we counted the ADA for that. This is back in the 90s.
I know, I was going to say.
I know, sorry. When they moved to eliminating excused absences from our ADA, they rebenched the formerly known as the revenue limit by the percentage that that represented. So they did do some re-benching there and said, okay, we're going to give you the benefit of that, so that you get it. It was roughly like 4.5%. They've never done that for the STIRS and PERS increases. So, just, and I remember back to the 90s, so I would remember.
Yeah, I thought that was still happening.
Anywho, sorry. Legal requirements for universal TK, I just threw this slide in so people could see that they're, we're moving up February 2nd, then April 2nd, then June 2nd, so that all four-year-olds will get two years of kinder, transitional kinder, and then kinder.
Oh, we can have a TK in every elementary school?
That is the plan for next year. Yes. You can go on. We already did this slide. Okay, so this is the enrollment. I just want to give you some numbers on this. Current enrollment, again, this is month four, on or around December 3rd, it's different for the year round, slightly different. Projected enrollment, again, we're at 7195, including all TK, including TK outside of the window, which don't show up on our seabeds. Projecting that enrollment cohort, 7179, 7177, 7175. So you can see how relatively flat we are. But what's striking is we have been at, and if you look at the prior year enrollment projections I've done, 7480, 7500, 7520, we've hovered around 7,500. And now, all of a sudden, we're hovering around 7,200, or under 7,200. So that, to me, was striking. And then average daily attendance, I'm just giving you some actual numbers, 7112, 7,112. That was 2019, 20 P2 ADA across all of our organizations. And we use that for 2020, 21. Our ADA right now is hovering at 6709, and that's as of P1. We know it will be lower come P2. It does not include the January spike. That was as of around December 3rd. Rolling three-year average then brings us at about 6978, or roughly 134 less than that 7112. So just to kind of give you some round numbers. And this is the best case scenario, because this is based on P1, not on P2 for this year. We know that's going to drop. Just to reiterate, there are lots of positives. You can roll through this. Thank you. There are lots of positives. The COLA is a real big positive. Luckily, our enrollment seems like it's stabilizing, so that is a positive. It doesn't look like it's going to decline significantly. We don't know for sure. That's based on cohort. Three-year rolling average, that's a positive. That's better than having to use this year or next year's ADA. We've got the challenges we've outlined already, PERS and STIRS increases, inflation, step in column. That's just really the cost of doing business. I didn't even go through everything like property liability, utilities, et cetera. So these are some of, this is really the starting point. And, you know, if we're lobbying our legislature, we should be lobbying them for maybe greater relief on the three-year rolling average. I don't know what that would look like. I'd like to see 2019 ADA for at least another year. But the STIRS and PERS relief, I think, is also huge.
What about basing it on enrollment? I mean, I know that that's what Assembly, Assembly member Levine, he's been pushing that. Is there, has anybody heard that there was, that there's movement on that? I mean, wouldn't that help?
There's quite a few initiatives that are out there. People are throwing out different ideas. It's just a question of, you know, last year, there was a lot of movement. I mean, there was a lot of ideas that were made. They all kind of fell by the wayside. So we'll see what happens this year.
But it would help it if it were enrollment rather than ADA?
Well, it would not help declining enrollment. Because declining enrollment is, you know, your ADA declines, your enrollment declines. It would help, because of the pandemic, and we're seeing our attendance drop. So, you know what I mean? It would, we wouldn't be harmed if during the pandemic, our kids are being impacted, and they can't come to school every day or as often. So from that perspective, it could help.
So you could see, I mean, there is some logic to, if somebody were to say, we're in support of the three-year average. However, we also want to recognize that in this one particular year, we had this thing called Omicron. And so you may see something that's a one-time to offset that. That's probably where they're going to, where they're land. But the question is, what would be coming off the table? Because he's allocated all his monies to very specific initiatives, which means something would have to, that's a significant chunk of money for that. And that would, where would that come from? And that would be, that's probably the biggest challenge.
Well, and I think to add on to that, Gary, because you're right, I didn't do a lot of slides around this, but the reality is, we all know what the Department of Finance is. That is the governor's financial arm that does his projections, right? And then there's the Legislative Analyst Office. That's the legislative financial arm. When you look at the revenue predictions or projections from the state, the Legislative Analyst Office from last November was actually higher than what the governor's projecting, or the Department of Finance is projecting. So this budget's actually a relatively conservative budget. So I do think there's going to be a lot of potential room, unless something changes dramatically, for the state legislature to come in and say, hey, you're being too conservative in this budget, and we think you should do X. Gary had mentioned something that I also didn't put in here that I thought was interesting, which is, a lot of this state budget is in one time. He's proposing a lot of one-time money, because a lot of those revenue increases are being driven by capital gains and one-time income for the state. So I think that this is a very reasonable and conservative budget. It's going to be interesting to see what the legislative process does now as they start to haggle over some of these programs and ideas. So there is potentially room for some of that shift to happen. What are our next steps? We're going to, we have the Budget Advisory Committee that's continuing to meet, and we're going to be starting to look at, you know, are there ways that we need to start freeing up money? Whether we're talking about refocus, you know, the budget cut word is not a word that we like, but maybe refocusing our resources, maybe something we have to start looking at doing. The LCAP Committee is continuing to meet. They're going to be a part of that process. We're trying to figure out what that's going to look like. Tony attends the budget. I'm starting to attend the LCAP, so we can have that cross pollination. Enrollment and staffing projections, we're starting to work with our site administrators to see, like, what we see, what they see, so we can start doing some staffing. I do think that there is going to be a particular kind of service layoff in our future in February, because we know we're overstaffed right now. We're going to continue to gather information on the budget development process. We're looking forward to the May re-bis to see, does that COLA hold strong, based on the April revenues? The stock market has not done so well. That could have an impact on some of those revenue projections. State Legislative Committee process is also going to be working to try to reconcile, once the May re-bis comes out, what they believe, so they can provide the governor with the budget by June 15. We're going to adopt our budget in June, and then the state, the governor needs to sign it by June 30. So that's kind of our next steps. Any other questions you might have, or things that you've heard?
On that last slide, you had an item about enrollments and staffing projections. You know, over that time that you reflected on, Chris, where we saw our enrollments drop from 7,500 to about 71 now, has the staffing, how has the staffing responded to that? Staffing levels has gone that. And then the second question I wanted to ask was, at what point do we talk about site closures? You know, that, just the drop that we've seen right now, 400 students, you know, I think we have at least 10 schools with enrollments under 400. So, you know, at some point, we have to broach that question, too, and what's a good time to do that.
Well, and we have schools that are really relatively close by in proximity also. So, you know, sometimes you have to consider the communities that you're serving. So, yeah, those are really great questions. And I think that those are things that the Budget Advisory Committee and the LCAP are going to be grappling with. Like, how do we start looking at things through a different lens, so that we can, you know, the target is to pay our staff, our teachers and our staff, the highest, most competitive compensation possible, while maintaining a highest level of program possible for our students and our community. How do you balance that? And so sometimes, the way you balance it is, you have to look at those harder, bigger, bigger questions. With, to your first question, though, which is really staffing and enrollment, every year, we make staffing, yes, modifications based on where we're projecting enrollment. And this year was no exception. When we were going into the year, we, you know, Matthew's not here, but we, Matthew and I had lots of conversations with principals, starting in last February. And we did make adjustments. We did edge, we did make adjustments. We reduced staff down. By staff, I mean primarily teachers. We usually don't have enough enrollment shifts to be adjusting classified staff, other than maybe instructional assistants in special ed, based on student movements. But our enrollment came in significantly less, and has continued to drop. And so we know that we are overstaffed right now. If we look at how we staff people, our numbers, school site, we staffed at maybe 1740, is coming in at like 1685. And that, that alone, that's more like three teachers. So that's a significant amount. So that's what we're going to be grappling with, is where do we see enrollment going, working with our site administrators? Because they're the boots on the ground. They hear information that we may not hear. But there will be some reductions, because we know that we're overstaffed right now, based on what actually happened, the whole whites of their eyes. Given the pandemic, we also did not want to make a lot of surgical changes in our staffing in August and September, when our kids were grappling with coming back to school, and our staff were, how do we do this again? You know, so, anyway, we do think that there will be some reductions necessary, but not from the 75 to the 70, because we've already been making some of those.
Do you know what that staffing production has looked like cumulative, from when we saw the enrollments drop from 7,500 to 71?
You know, it's a great...
Just wild ballpark.
You know, it's a great question. It's hard to say, because we also have added staff using our COVID funds. So we've offset some of that, leveraging the one-time COVID dollars. So it hasn't been a meet and tidy. And we used, we did that last year as well. So it hasn't been a perfect, a perfect shift. So I would hesitate to give a number, without knowing it off the top of my head. Other questions? Do you have any questions? No, this is a lot. Again, I know this wasn't like the presentations that led up to this, but I appreciate your indulgence as we kind of walk through.
This is important. Thank you. I think this is a good time for a five-minute break as well. We convene in five minutes. We are freaking meeting.
The meeting was in China, wasn't it?
At 7:35. Next up is comments from the public on non-agendized items. So we are going to open the chat. If you would like to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat. While that's open, I'm going to read our policy. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit, or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. So it looks like we don't have any comments from the public on non-agendized items. So we are going to move on to reports and activities, sorry, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. So since the last meeting, we attended Costa Grande Preview Night, Budget Advisory Committee Adult Ed Graduation, Governing in Times of Crisis, CSBA Workshop, Board of Supervisors Meeting, LCAP Meeting, Kenneworth Site Visit, K-12 Curriculum Meeting, CSBA Briefing slash Analysis of Governor's Proposed Budget, NAACP Snoma County Education Committee Meeting, PCS Dual Immersion Webinar, AAUW Pedaloma Webinar on Title IX at 50, and our student board member played in three soccer games against NAPA, American Canyon, and Justin Sienna. And she also attended a site council meeting. Excellent. Amazing.
Aren't you guys too?
Some, some way too hard.
I'm glad you got to play.
And you had enough people to play.
Oh, yeah.
Good. All right. Does anyone want to make any comments about any of their activities? Don't have to, but if you wanted to.
In Governing in Times of Crisis, they just basically said, pray that no angry community members come in. They didn't exactly say that, but that's, they're like, yeah.
In a nutshell, what happened.
Okay. I think we've been really lucky compared to some other schools.
Our public has been very respectful, so we appreciate that. All right, anyone else?
I went to the, or it became a webinar for AUW Pedaloma, and they had, it was for Title IX, you know, its 50th year. They had three people, Amy Cucares, who's AAG, which is a Diane. She was the host. And so, and she, she felt this, well, she doesn't feel, she was a direct recipient of Title IX. She was born in 1972. So she, she really feels this very strongly. So they have three panelists, who were, there was Maha Ibrahim, who is the equal rights advocate from, she was staff attorney, Elizabeth Kristen, who is a legal aide at work, who's the director of gender equity and LGBTQ plus rights program, and Kim Turner, who did coach, who's part of coaching for, that does recruitment, training, and supporting of coaches. And she's the director for gender equity. And I'm mentioning this because I'm going to, they did record it. It was fascinating. They were all really good. It was within an hour and a half. And it was just, as somebody who's, you know, watched this over my lifetime, and just seeing how, where it is at 50, the things, the barriers to gender equity that we already have, that we still have, sorry, considering that we're still at 50 years of Title IX. And then just understanding what Title IX is, and how And then just understanding what Title IX is and how to get, you know, younger people to even know. A lot of them don't even know what Title IX is and how the direct benefits are. So anyway, I'm going to try to get the information, try to find it before our meeting, so that we can maybe post it as, as like something that people can watch. It's really fascinating. That's it.
I just like lost my voice.
Sure. All right, we're on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Maddie? We're on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Comments from the public on consent items. Thirty people who are here who want to comment on the consent agenda items. Now is the time to put your name in the chat box with the subject of your comment. Do you want to take?
No, no, no.
All right, I don't see anyone. Is that right? Okay, all right. On to Agenda Item Number Ten, Approval of the Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion. We have a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have a question about the SARC reports. Is there a way to maybe get like an update of how they've improved or changed over the years? Because it just feels like in a lot of categories, we're not making the improvement that we want to see. And I've heard that staff have said that they don't have the numbers on black students, when the SARCs clearly show that we do. Right, I think in the LCAP meeting, people were asking for that. So it seems like this is a good data source to both track longitudinally how we're doing, and then maybe just another data pool to use when we need it.
Yeah, so every year, we should be updating our SARC. Well, by law, we were required to update the SARC report as well as make it public. So, and it should be aligned with, with what is available in our LCAP as well. However, I think some, some data points in the LCAP may not reflect some parts of SARC. So part of it could just be because of how data is collected in the LCAP, but the other piece is for us to make sure that there's some alignment with that.
Yeah, I had some concerns as well, just looking at the SARC, like, like, in, on all of them, except I think like Pen Grove. We saw like the same student groups below everyone else. Male, Black, Hispanic, EL, homeless, socio-economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities. And then also like, like a really high absenteeism rate for those groups of students. So just again, like, just calling that out. And I know that this is just to provide data. I think the SIPSA is the one where they like provide the data and talk about how they're going to address it. But I just think it's good for us just to call out those things, because like Caitlin was saying, it just doesn't feel like they're improving. And like, once again, like a student's race shouldn't, and our district should not determine how well or poorly they're going to do on these tests or in school. And a lot of them didn't even take the CASP. They did like these common assessments. And again, like, we just saw every single school, even a school like Cherry Valley that has like seventy-five percent of their students are white. It's like the Hispanic kids still like score just so much lower, so.
So I think that part of, that's probably a good segue that will be into, part of the reason why the, the service agreement that you pulled that's for an action item is important, because we're, we're, we've been assessment light for quite some time. You know, as recently as four years ago, there wasn't an assessment mining system that was there. And so some of your questions need to get answered through a deep dive in data. But if you don't, if you're not having a system to really crunch that as to the why specifically, you know, then you, then you get into, you run into the whole generalization pieces. And that's kind of what, it's the one criticism that people have of the SARC, because it's just a very general data point. It doesn't really do the deep dive. But I think that's probably why you chose some of these goal, these assessments as a goal setting that you set as a board. So I know Tony will, will go over a little bit about what, what the annex, I believe it's called the annex, isn't it? Yeah, the annex program does.
And I just think, just for all of us, just to note, like, these are things we should go back to once we get the Equity Study from Miranda, just to look at these things like McNear, like zero percent of the EL students were at grade level, like, none of them? Like, that's crazy. I don't know, so I just wonder what's going on with the staff, teachers, all of it.
And what can we do? How can we actually make it an accountability card? It's just, I mean, posting it as being accountable to the community, kind of.
Just accountable to the numbers, not the actual, what are the numbers telling us?
And I, yeah.
Yeah. Is that what you mean by like, yeah, accountability?
Yeah, accountability requires like action on the part of the body that is doing either harm or less than good, and that's us.
Absolutely.
And then also had a question, I don't know who to direct this to, Casa. Very, my class. Took a screenshot of part of it. Talking about people's enrolled in UC and CSU courses, but then the graduates who completed it. So I think they, like, only half of them actually completed the, like, the UC, like, A through G pathway. Is that something else that we're looking at at some point?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that will be a really big piece when we, when we address, you know, the challenges at the secondary, especially the high schools. You know, and I think the Equity Study should help provide some, some explanation for the systems that are in place that are preventing kids from accessing more A through G courses. And so you'll see even in, in some of the recent items where Padilla High School is revising some of their courses to make it, because they made it A through G, is a process to which we want to make sure that all kids have that access, and courses can reflect the A through G as well. So those are the systematic pieces that we, we're recognizing, and then we're fixing as we go along.
Thank you. What about enrollment in honors and AP?
Yeah, those are, those haven't been, I mean, from the data I can recall looking at, I mean, they aren't as high. And it could be just because there may be some prerequisites that are keeping kids from it, or because they're singleton classes that maybe doesn't allow kids to choose all, you know, a lot of courses that they may want to have access to. And that's something that, you know, we, we want to also look at, not only increasing the number of students taking APA courses and honors courses, but also making sure that it's equitable across all students, having access to that as well. Our subgroups, our English learners, our students with disabilities, our African-American students, all, all students have that access.
And some of those gatekeepers through those classes make it impossible, and so they're not equitable.
A question, just about how to read this. So it looked like the elementary schools did not take the CASP.
Correct.
And so then they were, they were assessing local assessment, and I just, what, were they the same local assessment? I didn't think we had a local assessment. And so I was just wondering what they were basing the percentages on, and if they were the same local assessment at each school? Is it a state local assessment? I was just like, not, it was unclear.
Yeah, so if they, if they did not take the CASP, then they would have had to, if they took a local assessment, that's the data they would put in there. And last year, I know, and Jason was, probably could maybe explain a little bit more. They, I believe they took the Read one-eighty star.
So we were, we, the state allowed us to do a waiver, to waive those if we could have other assessments in place. We did already have Star Reading and Star Math in place across the district. However, we also, as a district, had concerns about going through distance learning and possibly having learning loss, and then using those as tools, which were, are not really diagnostic towards standards. They place kids in like a grade equivalency, they rank them nationally, but it's not telling us where exactly the gaps are. And so as a district, across our entire, we worked together through shared decision-making to identify common assessments that were standards-based for our elementary schools as well, that were taken across the board. So we had two levels of assessment. We didn't do CASP, but we did two levels of local assessment to try and make sure we could really figure out where, you know, what was going on for our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Continuing with the SARC reports, Tony. Our colleagues have already asked most of the questions I had, but I wanted to ask you, when you look at these, you know, what pops out to you? What's the biggest concerns that you're seeing here? Understanding that we're missing a lot of data from the pandemic, but still, there's a lot that is here.
Yeah, I think that the, the one thing is, you know, the, the, the data that we see in the scores, but also understanding that, for example, you'll have Casa Grande that had ninety-two percent who took the CASP, but like Padilla High School had forty-three percent that took the CASP. So, so it's just really, it just helps us ask questions so that we can recognize what could have been the reasons why we're seeing what we're seeing. But at the same time, like, you know, recognize that there are, there are still gaps that are persistent within all the data that we're seeing, things that validate what we've been seeing. So really, I think in one way, the SARC just tells us kind of what we've already suspected. But at the same time, you know, it's, for me, it's more of like a call, a call to, to continue doing what we're doing with urgency and make it a sense of urgency, that there, there is a lot of work we still have to do. There's a lot of work, good work that we've been doing in the past, but I think, you know, we can't rest until we, we, we help close that achievement gap that we're seeing. And this just makes it glaring for us to know that, that, that work is still there and is still important for us to do.
Any questions about anything on the consent agenda? Or do you have questions, comments? Anyone else? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Moving on. And Tony, great job in the hot seat there. All right, comments from the public on action items.
So we just have one action item that was moved from consent. So it would only be comments from public on the item related to, was formerly,
Ten point two.
Ten point two, point two, the annex, the math service agreement.
If anyone has a comment on the math annex, please put your first and last name in chat. Let's leave it open for like thirty seconds. We have one. All right. Let's see if anyone else, we'll give it another couple of seconds. All right, so we have one comment on the math annex, Phoebe Ellis.
Good evening. And I just wanted to chime in and do appreciate the efforts around some sort of assessment that has not gone on, obviously, in the last couple of years. So I think having some sort of standard assessments is very valuable. And it sort of plays into what I read today in the newspaper, San Francisco Chronicle, which I'm sure, hopefully, you're all aware of, that the United Nations came out with a report basically stating that the educational setbacks are insurmountable at this time. So I think while the assessments are a step in the right direction, I think we have a lot of work to do about even getting kids to a point where they can even sit for an assessment at this point. It's a very interesting report, and I would highly encourage all of you to read it, because there's just another quote, it just basically says, "While the disruptions to learning must end, just reopening schools is not enough. Students need intensive support to recover lost education." So I highly encourage all in education, parents, students, to be reaching out to our public health officials at the local level and state level to encourage them to address some of these, our focus on COVID in the schools. We need to kind of refocus and allow educators to educate, especially knowing that the setbacks are just insurmountable, as, as indicated in the report by the United Nations. So thank you all, and always here to support and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Phoebe. All right, and that was it for comments on action items.
So Tony, you, Tony, you're going to go ahead and speak to the thirteen point, thirteen point three point four on this, when they, when they get, after they do their, their motion.
So I'll move to approve item, listed item ten point two point two, Approval of Service Agreement with Math Annex.
I'll second.
Tell us more about this, Tony?
Yeah, so.
So in alignment with the board goals, specifically, I think, goal one, action two, talking about aligning our, our, our idea that, you know, having common assessments, developing common assessments will, will help us be more data-driven as an organization. It's something that I think we're lacking, and the opportunity to, the purpose of the assessments is really to reflect. We anchor the conversations in our reflection around what the data that we're seeing that should be relevant in real time, so that we can make instructional shifts to improve instruction and also what we're asking kids to do. So that then in that effect, is the rise in its level of instruction as well as what kids are asked to do. So, so the power behind it is really in what we do with it, because assessments in itself really mean nothing unless we actually use it to, to drive what we're doing. So, so Math Annex has an expertise in developing the assessments around math, especially CASP, since they worked in developing the CASP performance assessments for CASP. And I actually have, I think Patrick is on, who is, who is with Math Annex, that probably can explain a lot more about it if he wants to chime in.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Just really briefly, thank you for having me here. Math Annex, as Tony stated, is really based on work I did for some years with the CASP, the Smarter Balance Assessment for Mathematics. And I think relevant to some of the discussion just a bit earlier, one of the things about it is that its standards align, but it's also asset-based. A lot of traditional assessments focus on just what students are not able to do. And what Math Annex does is really provides evidence of what students can do, rather than make assumptions about what they cannot. The design that we're going to build collaboratively will allow for multiple short, very short assessments throughout the year that will inform and monitor progress. So again, with concerns about COVID. So again, with concerns about COVID and disruption, disrupted disruptions in schooling, this is designed to not take away much instructional time, but rather provide opportunities for students to showcase what they know and how they can apply their math and communicate their mathematical reasoning at all grade levels in a way that will be consistent with what it will be expected at the end of each year in the CASP exam. So that's just a little snapshot, I'll stop there and I welcome any other questions.
So I know Caitlin, you talked about accountability and, and for us to hold ourselves accountable, the assessments allows us to, to, you know, make sure that we have these checkpoints and know where we're at at any given moment. Rather than waiting until after we take the CASP and realize, oh wait, we have a huge gap between our, you know, our students and there's a lot of issues. Why didn't we address this earlier? With this process and these common assessments allows us to address them, you know, periodically and make adjustments before they actually take the CASP. And also it helps us improve our instruction because, you know, we can start with what might the best practices be within, with teaching. But if we don't have a way to, to, to measure that, we don't know what actually is effective. With the common assessments, we can, we can look at if our instruction was making any kind of impact for all of our kids and then adjust and, and create targeted interventions if we need to immediately as opposed to waiting until we, we get a yearly data that comes out with CASP. So we can be much more strategic in regards to how we respond, much more strategic in how we just, how we adjust our instruction to meet the needs of all of our kids. And in a way for us to identify which kids are struggling early and make those adjustments so that we can start closing those gaps earlier and, and shifting and focusing where we need to focus before they actually take the, the CASP.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is this taking place of the CASP test or is it just kind of like a, like a progress check before the CASP testing? And yeah.
Yeah, you're right. It, it is something that we do. It's kind of like a, a checkmarks along the way just to make sure that we're in the right, we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
So it won't replace the CASP, but it will help us prepare for it.
Okay, got it. And then, is it going along? I know sometimes the CASP test can be kind of general math skills and not really curriculum based on like the specific class or it's more a grade level. Are the math annex tests based on like specific to each class or is it more broad like the CASP test?
It will measure what the CASP.
Actually, Tony, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I was going to ask you to go ahead and chime in.
Okay, perfect. That was an excellent question. One of the things that the proposal has in hand is that these math annex assessments, these sort of periodic check-ins over the course of the year start next year, but in this spring semester, there is allocations to work directly with the math leadership team to align the assessments to the curriculum. So it's a both and situation. It will be both aligned towards the goals and the standards focused on the CASP, but also it will happen in a way that is aligned to the pacing of each grade's math curriculum. So we want to try to achieve both of those goals and that will happen by working directly with the math leadership of the district.
My question is, is why do we have to go out, why are we spending money to go to some other group to come up with assessments that our teachers are going to use? I, I, I don't understand the reasoning behind needing to bring in another group to create assessments.
Well, I had a question to add on to that. I thought we hired like a math specialist.
Yeah, I don't, this is 80,000 bucks and I'm not really sure why we're spending that much money.
Well, I can tell you that creating math assessments, I, I don't know if our teachers have the time to spend time to create math assessments. I, I think, and also with their expertise in CASP and how the performance tasks are, are, are given during CASP, that's a whole level professional development that I don't know if our teachers have the time for or have the expertise for. You know, I know there are teachers aren't technically psychometricians, so it's, it's not an easy task to do. Having, having created assessments in previous districts where the teachers got together and created them, it took us, and that took them being pulled out of their classrooms to sit together and actually look at the standards, break down those standards, determine, look at the, the CASP blueprints and then break those down into, you know, claims and targets and then develop similar questions that are meant to be predictors of what they'll be assessed. Took us a certain amount of time and away from their classrooms for them to do that. And it was never completely perfect with, with what they actually wanted to create because there was just a lot of confusion around CASP and understanding how, how the accountability system worked. And, and so it took away from their instructional time where this allows us, them to focus on the instruction, have the assessments ready for them and, and also them not having to grade it. Since they'll do all of their grading and provide us real time data real quickly, the teachers can then just focus on reflecting on that data and focusing on their instruction.
So it's essentially teaching to the test. I have a problem.
Yeah. So.
If, if I can jump in, I don't think it's necessarily about teaching to the test. I think really especially during the pandemic is that every teacher I've talked to is maxed out. And as Tony points out, organizing and putting together curriculum, I'm sorry, assessments that align to curriculum, align to standards and actually capture important data about students' progress and report that data out takes a considerable amount of time. And one of the things that we're providing is all of the scoring and analysis so that teachers can devote all of their time and energy into making use of the data to inform instruction and support students. And so that's really the proposal here is to build a coherent, rigorous and equitable system across all grade levels in all the math courses in a way so that it provides tools for teachers to access in a timely and actionable way. So it's really not just developing the assessments, but it's also grading thousands of them and then reporting the results out in a way that is useful to teachers and to the district and to the board. So it's the combination of all those factors that's really being proposed here.
And just to add on to that, the, you know, the assessment process is just a direct route to how we interpret the standards so that we can build common interpretation about what we're seeing so that we can be informed of our instruction and shift and change that instruction. So that again, the net effect is that the instruction rises as well as what we're asking the kids to do. And Kate, you had a.
Yeah, sorry, just coming from a student who's been in a bunch of math classes in the district. Like the teachers are teaching, like in my case, it's CPM, and they're following that curriculum. Never in my entire experience as a student have I ever had a teacher teach me things that are on the CASP, CASP test. So I'm just wondering, are these progress checks, like are the teachers then going to take those results and implement what people are missing into their class on top of the curriculum? Or is it just like a student by student support thing? I don't know, I'm just a little bit confused.
Is that something you want to kind of answer, answer, Patrick?
Yeah, so the other comment came up about hiring Josh Dice as a math specialist. Really, I know that that was a conversation that Tony, Josh and I had was about what would be the most strategic and to, as regard to making sure that students have access to important mathematics that shows up on the CASP and that should be in the curriculum. I mean, the, your curriculum is approved by the state of California to be aligned to the common core standards. So those learnings should be happening. So if anything, this gets back to the question of accountability. And that is, is that through Tony and Josh's support, these periodic check-ins will also provide some accountability to make sure that in all math classrooms, students are having access to the essential mathematics that's going to be important, not just for the CASP. It's not just about preparing for a math assessment, but these essential math ideas are what's going to prepare them for future math courses and then eventually for college. That's really the main goal here. So I hope that answers the question.
I think the accountability comes in the discrepancy of the student groups that are taking the math tests. I think that's what Caitlin was referring to, she talked about accountability. But, I mean, I do have a question along the lines of what Katie was asking. And by the way, don't ever say sorry before you make a statement, girl. Just make your statement.
We really want to hear your voice.
Anyway, so, um, so like this initial design and integration, like are the teachers going to be involved with that? Like, I'm trying to understand where the teachers come in, like this first initial design integration or the professional learning with district leaders and stakeholders? Will teachers be involved with that?
Yeah, the, the integration, I believe, and Patrick, you can elaborate, is, is really just making sure that the data that we are receiving is integrated with our, with our own systems for us to access the data and be able to use it for our, our reflection. Is that correct?
Yeah, there, so there's two pieces. One being, you know, the coherence is making sure that it's integrated with your learning management system so it's easily accessed for all of the teachers. But the other version of integration has to do with making sure that the mathematics assessments are integrated with the pacing guide and curriculum. And again, I think there is a real, not just accountability, but equity in the sense that these really are intended to provide a sort of spotlight into what's happening across the district. I heard earlier some discussion about making sure that certain populations were getting access. And so these, these assessments periodically are not just to inform direct instruction in terms of what's happening in a individual classroom, but it'll really allows leadership either at a site level such as a principal or district wide, such as Tony and others in the board, to really make sure that, you know, that there is a common expectation that is, that is rigorous and applied equitably across all of the math courses across the district. And so that's another reason for having some, an instrument like this.
Okay, so you brought up accountability and then the equity. And then Tony, you talked about, you know, when we look at this, these numbers shifting and changing, how are the teachers going to do that, right? Like if we're saying they're so overloaded, is there going to be, again, more professional development so that they know how to shift and change based on this data, you know?
Yeah, and that's the, really the, the, the most important piece is that reflection piece where the teachers will sit together and look at that data and, and ideally highlight their subgroups to know where they are at any given moment so that they can make specifics targeted changes that they need to make instructionally. If they're noticing that their students with disabilities are not meeting the standards within the benchmarks, they can make adjustments collaboratively and say, what are we going to do for all the kids in fourth grade who are our English learners who are struggling in this particular, you know, in this area? What are we going to agree to do together so that we can increase their, you know, increase their achievement in that area for the next six weeks or however it is? And then we can measure again in the next assessment, did they make progress? And be more specific and mindful of that as opposed to, you know, waiting a whole year and never knowing where kids are at at any given moment at any given school and not knowing if they're, if they are meeting the standards or if they are getting equitable education from one school to the next or from one teacher to the next. And this helps us hold ourselves accountable, allow teachers to share best practices, but also allow them to realize some of the things that are doing may not be effective. And they can make that adjustment early as opposed to waiting the whole year to figure it out.
So this is for one year, right, this contract?
The, I believe, yeah. So the process is to develop the assessments, I believe this year, and then to go through the, the assessments for the fall and the spring.
So then what happens?
I'm sorry?
Then what happens?
And then we can determine whether or not the process was effective, if we need to make any adjustments or changes, reflect on it to make sure that we're not, we don't want to be committed to things too long without knowing if they're effective or not, so.
So then the idea is that then we would have them do this on a regular basis if, if we approve of what?
Yes, so we're using our one-time funds to help support this now to, to build the assessments, to go through this process, to create the accountability system so that we can.
But we would be, they would continue to give the test and penalize and all of that after 2023 if we approve of, you know, that they had done, that we improved on our achievement?
Yeah, so we will have the assessments, I believe, once they've completed them, we'll, we'll have those assessments. The, the question really comes down to, do we have the capacity to continually grade them? And in a timely manner to get the feedback that we need? Do we have the capacity to adjust them as we need to adjust them for every year for the students? So I think at the end of the 2023, it gives us enough information to determine, you know, to what extent we, we would want to continue the, the partnership or, or if we've built enough capacity within our own staff to carry the, the rest of the work on our own.
Has there been any feedback from teachers about this, about somebody else coming in and coming up with assessments?
I believe they, I believe they worked with the math department. I'm not 100% sure. I'll have to talk to Josh since he leads the math department to determine what kind of, what, to what extent the conversation has been. I know that the board goals have been shared with the PTF and we shared them, the LCAP and we shared them in other committees and letting them know like, you know, part of that is creating those common assessments for math, knowing that math has been.
And having common assessments.
Right, yeah. An area where it's, it's been a struggle for us and we need some way to hold ourselves accountable in some way to be more systematic about how we address it.
There's traditionally been a lot of pushback on this. There is traditionally, the, the, the district is not at a place where most districts are in this. The district is, is more 15 years ago. And, you know, the, the challenge that you have is when you make a decision that you're really going to focus in on equity, is do these kids, do all kids have equal access to the curriculum? And because we don't have any psychometric analyzed local assessments, and that's where the work is that he would be doing. Because you need to have reliability, you need to have validity and you need to have norming. And that is that teachers are not trained to, to develop psychometric assessments. They, they can tell you what content they're covering and that, and that's where you bring in both parties to say, hey, this is what I'm covering. But actually developing a, a test is a really, really complicated thing. That's why ETS makes millions and millions of dollars doing what they do and other, other organizations. But ultimately what you're trying to get to, here's the challenge. The, the, the prize at the end of this is when teachers sit down, they talk about best practice around something common. We don't have anything common here in the district to be able to rally around and say, here is some data that, that we, we, we've covered and we've assessed at Petaluma High School as well as at Casa Grande. We don't have that particular model. And so the question is, do students have access? Do stu, one of the questions is, do all students have equal access to the materials? That's where pacing guides come into play. Because pacing guides are one measure to determine whether material is actually getting covered for the length of the course, you know? And this is an issue for all districts because it could be very, very different from, from, from staff member to staff member. But I think the big part about the assessment, specifically the assessment, the assessment is supposed to give really quick formative feedback to the teacher and the student whether you're on pace with where you want to go with your learning. Because what a good assessment will do, if you have these in place, what good assessments do, it's like a triangle. There's three, there's three vertices on the triangle. One of the triangles could be this assessment, these quick time assessments. Another vertice is your grade in the class. And if those are authentic measures, you can predict how someone will do on a standardized test if those are accurate. If they're not, you get all kinds of skewed results for that. But as it relates to the kids that are underrepresented, there, are they getting the, the real time feedback? Are all students, but are specifically students that are underperforming, at least on academic measures? Are they getting the real time feedback and? are they getting the real-time feedback and access to the materials? We just don't know because there's no local measures in place. That's the challenge, is because there isn't anything in place. And it's not, it's just, it's been a philosophical thing for years. Kind of skipped that whole standards-based testing movement in Petaluma, became very, very independent. And so it's not, there's some good things and bad things to that. But the challenge now is that everything related to the LCAP is so heavily weighted on making people college and career-ready. And so heavily weighted on A through G and other indicators that, you know, it behooves the district to have to do a deep dive with staff. The critical thing, and I think Tony really recognizes it, is that it's authentic. The teachers are in there, so it's not one extra thing that we have to do. But formative assessment is part of good instruction.
Right.
It's critical, it's check-in. Every good instructor does that just naturally. And so we're not talking about these final exams, you know, that are happening periodically. It's just talk about quick, really critical formative assessment to guide instruction, yeah.
I was just going to ask, how are we going to ensure accountability for like individual teachers to use these test scores and like implement them into their teaching and how they teach? Because I know teachers who, they have their style of teaching and like getting these test scores isn't going to change the way that they address different groups of students.
It's a great question.
You know, I think really part of the shared decision-making process is really bringing everybody together in departments and kind of walking through that. That has been a fairly successful process is working with teachers on it as long as they are part of the development of the plan. Where organizations that are critical, where they don't have the expertise, particularly what he'll bring to the table and this or and other psychometric individuals is that testing and the reliability data, the development of the actual test itself. So you're trying to marry someone that knows how to develop assessments with what do you need in the classroom and what are you covering? And when are you covering it in the year? So there's a perfect marriage of that. That'll be the important thing. But it'll be a lot of conversations, and that's where your math coordinator comes into play. Because then your math coordinator, you have to do it, it's really time-consuming this because you can't bring, and Ellen and Maddie will appreciate this, I'll talk from an English perspective, is you can't bring English 9 and English 10 and 11 and 12th grade English teachers together in a room to talk about this general stuff. You have to bring them by course level. You have to really dive down into that course so that people are talking apples to apples, so that you're doing that articulation. So what has to happen in mathematics is it has to happen in every specific course. You can't just say, well, they're math teachers and bring them into the room. They have to really dive down by course.
You're talking about the Algebra I teaching, whatever it's called these days, Math 1 now.
You do articulation in a department, but when you're doing this kind of a dive, you're really talking about, okay, what do students need in this particular course to be successful? What standards are they being assessed on? How are, and then you start, then you kind of go from there. You really, it takes, it's a pretty lengthy process. But the real work for the math coordinators is now, how do you put it into play? How do you put it into play? And then how do you do the work? The important work happens after you assess. That's the critical time because you have to get to a point where you're looking at, we've got really interesting data, and it's not just Petaluma, it's throughout the state. Why is it that our students, oh, let me backpedal. By and large, students, contrary to what people think, students that score very high in English also score very high in mathematics.
Same for Ellen.
But what's unique in the assessments in California is for some reason, and it's the case in Petaluma, for some reason, students that score high in math are not scoring high. I mean, scoring high in English are not scoring high in math. And so districts have done this type of work and they've been able to close that gap by doing that. But we have not yet, we've yet to close that gap. It's still pretty significant, you know, as far as the college and career readiness goes for mathematics. So it's a game changer because we're, you know, we're underperforming in mathematics. The data, we knew that, we've known that for the last few years, so.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Stop saying sorry, just ask the question.
Really good question, it's really good.
So we have advanced, we have advanced students that are in either the grade level above. And like I know CASP testing is done by grade level. So in my case, like I'm a junior in a math analysis class with other seniors. So if my math annex test, I'm taking math annex test with other seniors who have a different CASP test. So if I'm taking the same CASP or the same annex test as all of them, where they're, like you said, there's a marriage of like the CASP in the curriculum, is my test going to be different from the senior sitting next to me? And how is my math teacher going to address both of our needs if mine is different?
It's a good question. How do you want to handle? I believe that the assessments are by course, by standards, by course.
Not by grade.
Not by grade level. No, 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 these assessments.
Right, so in 11th grade, all 11th graders take the CASP.
Yeah.
Right.
With the math annex as second through 11th grade.
Right, because we want to build common assessments. We don't want 11th graders, we don't want to wait till they're 11th grade to figure out where their gaps are in their math. So we will align the CASP and modify it for each grade level so that we can determine where their gaps are in their math and then begin to help close those gaps before they take the CASP in 11th grade. Second graders don't take it either, but we want to know what the data says about them in 2nd grade so that we can help target whatever instructional shifts we need to make before they get to 3rd grade, so the teachers have that information so they can start making some adjustments and then continually make adjustments through every benchmark. And the assessments are really are just nothing but a flashlight in the dark, just to check to make sure we're going in the right direction. And after so many of them, we'll see a trend. And if that trend line shows that the gaps are closing, then we can say with more confidence, how well our African-American students will be doing, how well our English learners will be doing, how well our students with disabilities will be doing. The ones that are often underserved, the ones that are often struggling in those accountability pieces, we'll have a better sense of what we need to do early and targeted so that we can look at the start and say, well, we're, you know, improving. We're making those improvements. Without it, I don't know where we will be at any given moment.
So to that, what's really important to remember in all of this is what's happening is something is happening between primary grades and intermediate grades where we start seeing that dip. And because that's not necessarily, you'll see students that are scoring very well and then just kind of tails off. And so it's, and I know a lot of the conversation was focused on high school, but it's really, a lot of it is related to being on it and really progress monitoring kids all the way through to find out where they are. Because as you know, I speak for my own daughter, she did not have a great experience over one year and it cost, it put her back three years. I don't think she ever really recovered from that. And so it's really trying to make sure that we clearly identify the targets for each grade level and that there's easy progress markers that not only you can, that students can be part of that formative process, but also teachers can, teachers need to be able to get together and be able to have really meaningful and rich conversations about how do we, how do we move the needle on this stuff? And that's where the real is at work, that's where this stuff becomes valuable, it's at the end of it.
Well, I see how it's like valuable, you know, to like get the different benchmarks, but like, so we'll just have the benchmarks and we'll just know that the black kids are still, you know, doing worse than the Hispanic kids. But then what do we do about that? Like, I don't see how this addresses that.
So I can tell you from my previous experience, being a principal and doing common assessments, I would sit with the like math department and we would look at the data and we would highlight the students who are our subgroup so that we knew how well they would be doing. It was an equity lens for us to see where the gaps are. And then together as a department, we made common agreements. And that's really the biggest shift for them is we noticed that these group of students struggled with these particular standards. Why? Was the question difficult? Was the question, did they not understand the question? Did we not teach those standards? What was the reason? And then we said, okay, well, what are we going to do differently so that these students can perform better at the next assessment? Or what are we going to do differently to catch them up? Because we noticed that 80% of our students didn't do well in that particular standard. Now we can be much more targeted about the particular standard. We could be much more targeted about which subgroups are struggling and make those decisions then in October rather than waiting until May and figuring that out. And then figuring like we lost a whole year to make that decision. We can make that decision in October, we can make that decision again in November, we can make that decision again in January. As every time we take the assessments, we're getting more information about where our kids are at and if they're making any kind of growth over time and then make any adjustments we need instructionally. And so that's where the power of those check-ins, of common assessments, give us because they give us the information early so that we know what we need to do instructionally to shift. Because if we don't shift instruction, then we're going to get the same results. But this at least gives information of what we need to shift, when we need to shift, where we need to shift so that the students can get the targeted interventions or support they need. And the teachers can be mindful of which kids are struggling so that they can, so those students have the best chance of finding success in that particular subject.
So who is the professional learning target towards? Two full days or four half-days, professional learning with district leaders and other stakeholders?
So maybe, Patrick, you can explain more about the professional learning?
Yeah, my understanding is that there is a district math team comprised of teachers at various grade levels and that these, this team of teachers would come together to collaborate around making sure that there's common agreements. I think that was something that was mentioned earlier about pacing and ensuring that the assessments are aligned with the pacing in the curriculum. So that's part of that. The other is that I hope is that there is included in those two days at least maybe an hour or so, a remote check-in with site leaderships. One of the questions that came up is, you know, how do assessments actually impact change? Of course, just measuring kids over and over again doesn't make them grow, but it's a tool for the targeted intervention. And this is where I would work directly with site leadership, often around things like PLC structures to really give them the tools so that they can support their staff. And so again, this is a sort of initial two days spread out among these groups to lay the foundation so that the various, be it site leadership, district leadership, and teachers that are part of the development team all have a common understanding and shared vision and goal for this. And this is what we would do in the spring to really prepare the way so that in the fall, we can launch this effort.
And just to affirm that the math committee is on board with this and they do recognize that the whole test creation is beyond their capacity at this point. And so this is something that they do seem to value and are on board with.
Who is the math community?
It's comprised of teachers representative of each school site and Josh Dice leads the math committee.
And they've given their input and everything into this?
Yes, we were just on a chat with him and he confirmed.
Yeah, that was one of my big questions, is where the teachers at with all this?
Any other questions or comments? Without saying sorry.
I just want to acknowledge that this is one of our board goals. It's action number two. I appreciate that you put it right in there. And math is, you know, as Gary was saying, is, you know, a longstanding place for improvement here. You know, I think the key, I appreciate what Tony was saying, you know, the key is when we get this feedback, it's not for us to categorize students, it's to reflect on our practice of teaching and to improve it, to close those gaps. So I think that, you know, I think the board's questions have to do about accountability and, you know, what we do with these assessments. And, you know, we are the accountability. We have to make sure that the assessments are used in ways that change behaviors and practices that improve math, you know, competencies and closing, and close these gaps. So I think there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, there was a motion.
About a half hour ago.
It was moved and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't let us down. Again, the hot seat, that was a long one.
I appreciate all of your questions. I think this is really an exciting step forward to really help support students. And I'm happy to partner with the district on this particular math journey, so I look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion slash information items. All right. 13.3.1, new fourth proposal, Petaluma High School.
Yeah, so. We, I think we recently had approved broadcast journalism 1, and this is a continuation of that, to make sure that we create a CTE pathway for broadcast journalism. Ideally, we want to have the introduction class, which is would be broadcast journalism, and then the concentrator, broadcast 2. And then hopefully we'll be able to get a capstone so that the kids can have a full pathway into exploring the broadcast journalism.
All right, do you want to talk about your book?
Yeah, so that's a revision, that it was not an A through G approved course before and they revised it to make it A through G, so it really helps the kids when they apply.
All right, overnight.
I can't wait to see how many TikTok influencers that PHS pumps out in the next couple of years.
Overnight field trip requests.
Yeah. Yeah, which is, which Tony and I. So you're going to see a list of overnight field trip requests that are on the PDF. And the general sense was there's a number of them that haven't come forward from the board. I believe, Tony, is it correct, it's the, everything from 2/24 on?
Correct.
And the general sense was that rather than bring anything for approval, we need to kind of, we needed at least initially wait to see where we are in a couple of weeks. The general plan of action that ultimately you'll have to make the final decision on is if we bring one for approval or any of them for approval, we will have already gone through the steps of ensuring that they've met our COVID safety plan and the questions related to the uniqueness of this trip. If it's, and so there's going to be a little bit of work on Tony and his merlida's part to kind of go back on some of them, because some of them are a little trickier than others to ensure that they've met all of that criteria. But if it comes forward to you, it will be, you know, that, they've met those criteria.
So they will already have met the criteria?
They will have met, as stated in our plan.
Okay.
But as of right now, at least for the next two weeks, there's too many moving parts. We don't know whether there's going to be changes in the order and people are just going to have to hang tight a little bit.
The order goes to February 11?
I think so. Most likely we'll get it, there'll be a modification or an extension, most likely. You know, I mean, it's hard, always hard to say, but it's all based, you know, a lot of it's based on case rates and they're very high right now, so.
And the ones we already approved, obviously, we still have to meet.
They still have to meet their criteria, yes.
So moving forward, we'll scrutinize the requests a little bit more and making sure that they are compelling reasons for them to go and that they are going through the checklist that we have in place and then any additional, you know, research on the event that they're going to and making sure that that also has similar safety protocols that we want to make to ensure our kids are safe, so.
Well, also, if they have to pay for something and then something flares up, it would be nice to know that they would be able to get their money back. If it's like, okay, we can't let you go because Omicron's gone bananas. If it's like, okay, we can't let you go because Omicron's gone bananas.
That's a really good, that's a really good point. We should probably put that as one of our questions is the refundability.
Yeah.
Or at least transfer ability.
When I say, when I say a deep dive, I mean, what I mean literally is, okay, walk us through the day exactly, you know, and we go through the whole day to, because we're looking at at trying to minimize close contact in a, is as as much as reasonably possible, knowing that that our teachers are pretty adept at this, particularly the ones that are, that the ones that I see on this list, they they've been doing this before. And almost all of them had a field trip, I believe, yes, last year in same, in the same conditions, so. I don't, nothing that we're gonna bring up is gonna be a surprise.
Okay, so that's good. All right. Moving on to future business, anyone have anything? Okay, I do. So I know a couple meetings ago, we had asked about Circle Up being canceled, bringing in like a different consultant group. And so I'm just wondering what the progress is on that, especially in light of everything that we've talked about tonight. Yeah, like accountability, looking at all of the gaps, addressing, right? If there are these groups of students that are continuing to fall behind at the schools, how are we gonna address that?
We can bring that one back. We actually talked about that at Cabinet. And so there's work right now that's being done on that one, so they'll be prepared to talk to you on that.
At the next meeting or?
I don't know if it's when, I don't know when your meeting with representatives, if that date has been set or not. But if it is, then we'll bring the the date at the next meeting.
Cause there was a survey that went out. I know, I I don't know if everybody got it or just the people that.
Practitioners got that, everybody has had leadership sets, sorry, leaderships have surveyed, practitioners have had surveys, so yes, I'm collecting that data right now to do the Circle Up and leadership here.
Oh, I thought Circle Up was done.
I thought it was done.
Because we had talked about bringing in a different consultant group.
Assistant.
Yeah, we wanted to reassess and find the right, the best pathway for Circle Up, so it's been put on pause. And TBIS is gonna do some work. And then Circle Up, we're gonna make the best decisions possible based on the equity data, the data from the practitioners and the, because to all of your point, we don't want to lose that work that they're doing. But is, are they in the right lane?
I thought the issue was they weren't doing the work that we wanted them to do. So and that's why we approved the Mormon consulting because Circle Up wasn't doing all these things. So they weren't doing.
The practical application of it, so we're gonna have some practical work, but there, we still have a contract with them, Circle Up, so we need to.
Then why did we have, then why did we get a contract with the other people then, right? To address the positive behavior because wasn't Circle Up, right? Supposed to be doing the rest of the.
Circle Up wasn't touching the students at all.
Right, right. So this other, this other work will, but Circle Up, we still are in contract.
So we can't just.
But the other doesn't.
But we still approved the other consultant.
Right.
Right, so that was the.
Labor.
That's part of the reason to continue to work with Circle Up is to, is to make sure that that piece is being addressed as well.
So are we reevaluating the contract? I thought that what I remembered from June of 2021 was that we would agree to another year with Circle Up, but then they needed to really show considerable effectiveness and that we were going to then reevaluate in 2022 before that third year was gonna go through. That was my understanding.
Cause the money was getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah, and so it would be another chunk of change. So so I can understand what you're saying, that contractually we need to you, continue to use them for the spring. But then if nothing changes, then we can cancel that contract.
For next year.
In June for next year.
We don't have, I don't think we have a contract beyond this year.
Well, we're taking.
So the tricky part is this, I can, I can, I can help a little bit because I'm in the same boat you are. Because this was the questions that were, that we asked a little bit. The 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 plain answer is that it sounds like the district is looking towards pivoting, pivoting to other partners. However, there is a contract right now. And so we have to be very careful about that and make sure that we 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 go through a process with the vendor, in this case, Circle Up. That's probably all I'm comfortable really saying at this particular point in time, but we need to do that. And it is possible that they might be able to do some work to complete that contract, but but there just has to be that conversation that takes place. And I think that that's one that Chris and Mate and Matthew are gonna need to have with with Circle Up. At the same time, there's, so that's just speaking to that one. Because that was the 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 question that came up was what's the status? Because you asked the question to me and I asked the question today at Cabinet about that. What was the status of of all of this? And so.
So is Circle Up doing anything right now? What are they doing?
Yeah, I'm proud.
So they're not doing anything right now?
They're gonna unfuse in February, right?
They met, they met with leadership, they did evaluation last week. And that data was collected and then the survey went out to practitioners and that data's been collected and then we're meeting with them. I think it's February 3rd, I don't have my calendar, um, about what we collected and see what the.
What's the data?
They charge based on their, they don't charge unless we are, when we're in working with them.
What's the data that they're collecting, that Circle Up is collecting?
So they've asked questions about, um, about the impact of the school sites, what would they change?
The impact of what? Of them?
Of the training, what has, what's been working, what hasn't been working. Those kinds of basic questions, the practitioner question or directly about the trainings they've been in and have you rated yourself on your competency in that? Do you feel comfortable using these, these practices in a school setting? Those are basic, the basic questions.
I'm just wondering how many practitioners are willing to continue? Because my sense, because I'm one of them and I'm, I'm done. I'm not, I'm not getting anything. So I'm just wondering if there's other practitioners that are saying, you know what, this isn't worth my time.
It's kind of a, you know, on each side, there's like thirds, some who are not wanting to come back, some who are wanting to continue, and then there are people in the middle. Many people feel, um, that they want the restored practice piece to continue, but they need it to be delivered to them in person. That's the overwhelming.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we asked for. We asked for them to come to our district, to actually be in person. And this was long before Omicron, I mean, you know, it was during the fall and.
So can I suggest that we, because we are, this is a contract, we are evaluating it and we are actively having this conversation. We can certainly bring it back.
Yeah, that would be great.
For future agenda topic.
I thought it was already done, I'm sorry. That's why I thought we approved the Mormon consulting, why we were gonna get someone else to actually address diversity because they weren't doing it. So then to hear that we're going back to them and asking them to ask other people who haven't been addressing diversity, like it just doesn't make sense to me. Like Circle Up's gonna ask people who haven't been doing work, they haven't, I don't know.
I don't think that's the question. I think that I I can see how you how you would see it that way. I think the question, the question is about not necessarily, I don't know, this other, this other consulting piece to it. The question is, we're in, we're under a contract with with a vendor. And so what, has the vendor been given an opportunity to 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 respond to the concerns? And we have to go through a very methodical process with that. And whether whether or not they, that doesn't necessarily mean that they would be going back, I guess. It just, it may, they may have, they may be pivoting or they, there's so many scenarios, different scenarios. But when it's a contract, we gotta be really careful about how we go about that.
Right, I hear that, but we hired someone else to do more that Circle Up was supposed to be doing.
I think we hired the second group to do something different. You know, that we're, we're trying to address, you know, behaviors, but also attitudes, you know, and perspectives. And I think Circle Up was kind of heavy on the attitude side, lacking on the behavioral side. We're trying to fill that gap with this second vendor that's focused more on the, on the behavioral side of things. I I still think there's a role for a Circle Up like intervention that addresses attitudes. I'm not, I don't know if it's Circle Up or not, but I think that that is the core of the, you know, the biases that we see is attitudes. We gotta change those too.
Anyone else have future businesses? Any other future businesses? All right, meeting adjourned.